June 27th, year of our Lord, 2023, 6:00 PM. Invocation will be given by Pastor Harry Irwin of the Sherwood Baptist Church, followed by Item 3, Pledge Allegiance in Texas Pledge. Anyone wishing to join, or is, uh, do we have Pastor Irwin in, uh, come on over? Anybody wishing to join us in a moment of prayer can do so by standing up voluntarily and join us for a moment of prayer. Pastor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, for the opportunity would you join me in prayer? Father God, I just thank you. Thank you for who you are. You're a great God. And God, as we have gathered here today to, uh, to have this time of meeting and, uh, of leadership in our city, God, I just thank you for our city. And, uh, God, I just thank you for each of these members, uh, for the leadership in Odessa. And, uh, God, I just pray that you would bless them, bless this time, bless their families. God, I pray that you would lead them and guide them, give them wisdom and knowledge, uh, that they may lead our city, uh, to be faithful to you. For God, we know that without you, we can do nothing, but with you, we can do all things. And so, God, I just pray that you would give guidance and wisdom, uh, that you would bind the evil one and those with wicked intent, uh, from dividing and destroying that which you are trying to do. Uh, but God, I just pray that you would move and work within each one of us. God, I want to thank you most of all for Jesus. I want to thank you for the hope that he gives, the forgiveness that he gives, uh, the salvation that he purchased with his blood. And God, I thank you for that sacrifice. I'm thank you that he's not in the grave, that he rose victorious. And because of that, we have hope and a future. And God, I just pray that we would live in such a way that we honor his sacrifice. God, help us to be people of integrity. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor, integrity, Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the D.C., Texas, one state under God, one individual.
Yee-haw. Item 4, proclamation, presentation, awards, and for tonight. Can the back room hear me? Can you hear it? Can you hear it? Yes, we're good. If you can't hear, it's just somebody said to pump up the volume. Uh, reason why is because people stream in and oftentimes we're getting texted that, uh, volume is, uh, inaudible. Sitting comments and non-agendas can be done so by filling out a speaker form. Can come forward. You have three minutes to speak on any, uh, non-agenda items. Remind the council on non-agenda items, we cannot respond, but we can direct staff to answer questions or to follow up on anything that is proposed, if, if needed. Also, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda item before or during the consideration of said item. Council, before we consider the consent agenda, I want to propose a, uh, mo- uh, motion to suspend the rules, so we can, uh, move, so on, um, on the resolutions, I would like to move up item 19 and 20 above item 18. In order to do that, we need to suspend the rules and I'll entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Swan. Do I have a second motion? Second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We are going to move item 19 and 20 above 18 and move 18 to be the last item. Council, will you overlook the consent agenda as you review it? Do we have one? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Let's amend that, um, can we amend the motion?
Yes.
Uh, need a consideration for amendment of the motion to also move up item 21 above 18. I'll need an amendment for, uh, an amendment to the motion on the 21.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Swan. Second. Second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Do we want to make a motion on 22 also? Okay.
So moved.
Will not recognize that motion. Take a moment, take a minute to look at the consent agenda and entertain a motion for approval denied.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, uh, to approve the consent agenda by Councilmember Swan. It's presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We're going to move on to regular, uh, agenda items. 14, Consider Recommendation for the Amendment of the Family Health Project. Change employee's 90-day waiting period to a 30-day waiting period. Presented by Ms. Ortiz.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members.
Is that on? Is it on?
I believe so. There you go. Uh, this request is for approval to amend the Family Health Project, which is our medical and dental benefits for city employees from a 90-day waiting period, uh, down to a 30-day waiting period. We believe by making this change, it'll give another tool to, uh, the city for recruitment. That'll help us with recruitment.
How fast would this, uh, change, uh, take effect?
We are asking for, uh, approval to take effect immediately, effective July 1st.
July 1st.
Yes, sir.
Council, any questions, direction?
I think it's a good move. I'll make a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Swan. Do I have a second? Second by, uh, I'm going to give it to Councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Going to go into a public hearing. Item 15, Open Public Hearing to Consider Reallocation of $64,860 in CARES Act Development Block Grant Coronavirus CDBG CV Funds. Ms. Underwood?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, before you, uh, this evening, we're going to bring three federal grants, uh, for you guys to look at and to allocate funds for. The first one is, uh, we're requesting authorization to establish a health and safety program for the elderly and disabled citizens within our community. With the, uh, this will be funded through the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Funds. We're cur- we're currently seeing fewer, uh, people coming in asking for assistance with our rental program that have had, uh, uh, the virus. So we're looking at another way. We can still serve the peoples, uh, the, uh, the citizens of Odessa and, and, uh, use, utilize the funds to prevent, prepare for, and, uh, respond to the virus. In establishing the health and safety program, we are able to provide items to improve living conditions in their homes. With, uh, we can install air fil- an air filtration system, which removes bacteria, viruses, allergens, and dust from the air. Other examples of, uh, assistance we could provide would be replacement of HVAC systems, replacements of doors and windows, and installing window, uh, air conditioning units if it's not feasible to put in an HVAC system. We are requesting that you approve the use of $64,860 of the CDBG CV funds for this program. These funds are unspent funds from two nonprofit agencies and transferring $50,000 from the department's administrative CV funds to this program. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Marita, these leftover funds?
Yes.
Okay, unspent funds.
Unspent, yeah. We have some money sitting in our CV admin funds and I don't believe we're going to need to use all of them because of the, the virus has slowed down. So I'd rather take some out of our admin funds and put it to promote a program where we could actually do some, uh, some good to our citizens.
Council, any questions? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion for approval by Councilmember Thompson. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Mata to approve item 14 and the, uh, reallocation of $64,860 and $50,000 for the, uh, admin?
Yes.
Is that correct? All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay.
Yeah.
Motion, uh, is approved unanimously.
I have a question. Do you guys have to do the allocation? Dan, I think this is for you. Would you each have to vote?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're going to move on to item 16?
We'll have to. Yeah, you've got to vote on. On, uh, each council member has to say yea or nay, or how much they want to allocate to the program.
Oh, the funds start.
Are you ready for me?
This is an easy question.
Okay. So $64,860?
Same. 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 Same.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, you'll need to make a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to accept allocation as presented.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, uh, we have a motion by Councilmember, uh, Swan. Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye. All opposing indicating by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on to item 16. Open public hearing to consider allocation for $94,434 in the Program Year 2023 Community Development Block Grant Funds, CDBG 54, $54,732 in CDBG, uh, Program Income Funds, and $12,295 in unprogrammed CDBG funds. Also consider allocation of $364,752 in 2023 Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. Ms. Underwood?
Thank you, Mayor. HUD has, uh, allocated the city of Odessa in, uh, $904,434 in CDBG funds for Program Year, uh, 2023. In addition to that, the city has $67,067 in Program Income and Unprogrammed Funds for a total amount to be allocated tonight of $971,501. The total requests for CDB funds this evening equal $1,278,069. The following caps for CDBG money, uh, are, are established of $180,887 for Program Administration and $143,880 for Public Service Activities. All requests for funding were summarized in your proposal, uh, project proposal book that you've received, uh, and I, uh, I trust you've had a, uh, chance to look over them. With your permission, I would like to present the departmental request for the 2023 program. For Community Development Administration, I'm requesting $150,000. These funds will provide for salary, benefits, and operating costs for the department. Staff is responsible for, for administering both of the CDBG and home program, uh, grants that come into the department. That includes developing, uh, reports for HUD, uh, overseeing, uh, the, the sub-recent incident, ensuring the funding is, is spent appropriately. For the Housing Rehabilitation Program, I'm asking for $505,836. This program provides assistance to low and moderate income homeowners in Odessa through one of our several, several types of home repairs. We can do anything from replacing a sewer line to replacing a roof to doing the reconstruction, uh, of a home that is, uh, not, uh, structurally sound. We make the homes energy efficient. These, these programs are carried out by the construction manager and our housing assistant. So far this year, we have completed four reconstruction projects. We have three reconstruction projects underway. We've, uh, completed six minor repair projects and have nine projects underway. And we currently have a waiting list for people who are needing our assistance. For the demolition program, I'm requesting $180,000. This fund, these funds are used for the removal of unsafe buildings and carried out with the funds provided in this program. Staff identifies both residential and commercial structures that are unoccupied, open, and structurally unsound. With the assistance of the street department, those structures are removed and we pay for that, uh, removal with these fundings. To date, we've, we have removed 32, uh, structures. Our, uh, last year, we established a short-term rental assistance program, which you, um, graciously gave us $30,000 to, uh, to start out that program with. Uh, I want you to know that we spent that $30,000 in less than a month. There's such a need out there. Um, I'm requesting $115,000 for this program and, uh, because of the need we saw within our community. The, uh, there continues to be a need in, um, assistance with rent here in Odessa. And according to the Federal Home Loan Bank, the average in, uh, increase in rental costs in the community has been 8.4%. And, uh, our last program that we, uh, run out of the pro- out of our department is the Elderly and Disabled Lawn Mowing Program. I'm asking for $20,000 for that program. This is where the homeowner can receive up to five, uh, their lawn mowed up to five times during a year. And that will, that depends on the rainfall. We can adjust that as necessary. We currently have 60 households on the program. And that is, uh, my request for the CDBG funds. On the home program, we have a total, uh, available of $364,500, uh, $752. These funds must be used exclusively for housing projects. For those funds, I'm requesting, uh, Program Administration of $36,475. For our homeowner reconstruction program, $273,564. And for the Community Hell of a, Community Housing Development Organization, $54,113. These are the programs that are provided by the Community Development Department. All of these programs are fun- funded solely by the HUD funds that, that you allocate to us. We, we are grateful for the support that you have, uh, provided us over the years and, uh, allow, and allowing us to continue with our projects. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So the request is $1,278? Is that a, uh, and the, the available funds is $1,201? So the available funds?
Is $971,51.
$979?
$971,501.
$971,501, all right? Okay, so. Do we have a deficit on the, uh, on the request?
Yes.
$300,000? $300,000? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just have it go down the whole deal? Instead of just one and then go across? Okay. Councilmember, go ahead.
Okay, so the, starting now with the Program Administration, $150,000. Housing Rehabilitation, $460,000. Demolition, $150,000. Greater Opportunities of the Permian Basin, $75,000. Permian Basin Mission Center, $18,000. Short-term Rental Assistance, $75,000. The Elderly Disabled Lawn Mowing Program, $15,501. Family Promise, $18,000. Meals on Wheels, $5,000. West Texas Food Bank, $5,000. So Home Program Administration, $36,475. Rehab Program, $273,564. Community Housing Development, $54,713.
Marita? Is that one blacked out for a reason? Do I need to unblack that one? Or the Community Housing Development Organization, does it need to be found by Choda?
Choda? Choda is required, right?
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement. It's just, no.
So total allocation would be $364,752. The, for the? The $54,713?
All right. Program Administration, $150,000. Uh, Housing Rehab, $460,000. Demolition, go $150,000. Greater Opportunities, $75,000. Permian Basin Mission Center, $18,000. Short-term Rental, $75,000. Elderly and Disabled Lawn Mowing Program, $15,501. Uh, Family Promise, $18,000. Meals on Wheels and West Texas Food Bank, five each. For home? $36,475. Homeowner Rehab, $273,564. And Community Housing Development, uh, $54,713.
Program Administration, $150,000. Housing Rehabilitation, uh, $450,000. Demolition, uh, $150,000. Head Start Program, $75,000. Permian Basin Mission Center, $18,000. Short-term Rental Assistance, $50,000. Uh, Elderly Lawn Mowing, uh, $15,000. Family Promise, $18,000. Meals on Wheels, $10,000. West Texas Food Bank, $10,000. Uh, Home Program, $36,475. $273,564 is good. And then, that's the last one there. Program at, uh, $150,000. Housing Rehab, uh, $450,000. Demolition, $150,000. Head Start, $75,000. Mission Center, uh, $18,000. The, um, Short-term Assistance, $50,000. Loan Program, $15,000. Family Promise, uh, $18,000. Meals on Wheels, West Texas Food Bank, ten each. $36,475. $273,564. And then $54,713.
Program Administration, $150,000. Housing Rehabilitation, $450,000. Demolition, $150,000. The Hollinsworth Head Start, $75,000. Mission Center, $18,000. Short-term Rental Assistance, $50,000. The Elderly Mowing Program, $15,500. Family Promise, $18,000. Meals on Wheels, $15,000. West Texas Food Bank, $15,000. The Home Program Administration, $36,475. The Homeowner Rehab, $273,564. And the Community Development, $54,713. I guess it's already there? Yeah, I'm sorry.
The Program Administration would be $150,000. Housing Rehabilitation would be $460,000. Demolition, $150,000. The Hollington Head Start would be $75,000. Permian Basin, uh, Mission Center would be $18,000. Short-term Rental Assistance, $75,000. Elderly, uh, Disabled Lawn Mowing Program at $15,501. Uh, Family Promise at $18,000. And five and five on the Meals on Wheels and West Texas Food Bank. Uh, $36,475. And on the homeowner rehabilitation would be $273,564.
And Mr. Haney?
$150,000 on the Program Administration. Uh, $450,000 on the, uh, Housing Rehab. $150,000 on the Demolition. $75,000 on the Head Start. $18,000 on the Mission Center. $115,000 on their Short-term Rental. I'm sorry. Apologize. $75,000. Uh, $15,000, uh, on the, uh, Elderly Disability Mowing. Eight. It would be $18,000 on the, uh, Elderly, I'm sorry, Family Promise. Meals on Wheels at, uh, five. West Texas Food Bank at five.
Mr. Haney on home?
$36,475. And, uh, $273,564. And then the, uh, $54,713.
On home, it looks like there's a consensus amount for everything on CDBG.
Somebody needs to add a dollar or remove a dollar?
Uh, do the $15,000 even online?
$15,000 even?
There's, there's many left. It's $971,501.
How much?
One.
You've got 10, is that right? $10,501?
Yes.
$10,501. Uh, you want to, so?
Let me keep mine back at $15,501.
Make it even. Make it even. Um, I'll move mine to 15.
Cause it has to.
I'll add the dollar. No, no, I've got it, um, so we need a consensus on that one, right? Okay, I'll move mine up to 15,501. Okay, so that evens it out, 10,000. Anybody want to split it on the, on the Meals on Wheels and West Texas Food Bank?
Yeah. We still have a consensus. If I, let me change my Housing Rehab down to 450. And then the, I'll give an additional five to Meals on Wheels and an additional five to West Texas Food Bank. Should be, be the same.
We had, we only needed one to have a consensus. We only needed one.
So, so you were at 15, right? Mark, previously you were at 15? You're at five.
Now it shows we have 20,000.
But we, but, but you went up 20,000 because you dropped it 5,000 on both.
I dropped 10 off of, uh,
Yeah.
Off of the Housing Rehab, so it gave me 10 to play with.
So the, the total amount is $971,501, correct? Of the total allocation? Yes.
But we went, we went plus 20, 10, 10, so we're, we had, uh, 10,000 available, now we have 20.
Right.
Available?
Yes, we have 20,000 available.
On the top, uh, upper, upper left? Remaining funds is 10, so we went from 10 to, to 20, so, um, I will, uh, I'll. So we can increase or decrease, is that what we're saying, independently? We want to try to stand consensus?
I think I'd like to move my Meals on Wheels to 15.
You want to go ahead and? Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, let me adjust mine, uh, to Meals on Wheels to 15. Is that what it is?
On Thompson?
On Thompson, yeah.
Thompson, yes, sir.
So I need to drop 10,000. You only have two that have, have 15 and two have 10.
I'll move mine to 15 on both. Uh, Meals on Wheels and West Texas Food Bank. Still, we still want more.
Anybody wants to, uh, adjust on that?
Well, you don't have, I mean, if we can get everybody to agree that, you know, just because you, you show you spent more, there's other people up there that didn't spend all of theirs, so.
Okay, I was gonna say, I spent a little bit more, but, so do, I don't need to mess with mine and come down?
No.
So we're over, I'm at fifty-six.
I mean, if I come down on the short-term rental assistance from seventy-five to fifty, will that be a consensus on that one?
On the short-term?
On the short-term rental assistance, if I come down to fifty-
Yeah.
Will that make it a consensus? Oh, then we'll don't- Now you have forty-five thousand. Okay, then put it, okay, then go ahead and put it, keep it the same, sorry about that.
Yeah, we'll keep it the same.
Yeah, it's still, I mean-
It can be up to-
We have three for fifteen and three for five and-
On Family Promise, I can increase it, from what I said earlier was, what, fifteen thousand? Make it eighteen thousand?
The one that we need to work on is-
Where does that put us, Seth?
Yeah, the two Meals on Wheels. Yes, sir. We've got, we've got three, three at fifteen. We've got three at five and one at ten. Meals on Wheels-
Meals on Wheels and Food Bank.
Yeah. That's gonna increase me because I'm already at- I think maybe somebody goes to fifteen.
Who'd they be up to?
On each one, taking this- Yeah.
We just need somebody to go to fifteen? We just need somebody to go to-
Somebody needs to go down. Go, go to-
Well, that puts him-
Oh, now we're over ten.
That puts him over, though.
That puts you over.
Oh, you know what?
Yeah, we need everybody at ten, I think, yeah.
Drop it down.
Well, if they want to, that's up to them. Yeah. If somebody wants to go back down to, go to ten, we shouldn't have gone to fifteen, we should have gone to ten, and that would-
Drop my Hollingsworth Head Start to seventy. And that'll still give, that'll still give them a consensus at seventy-five. Drop mine to seventy, right there.
To seventy?
Yes. Because we're gonna, Haney's gonna have to change his, then put my Meals on Wheels to fifteen. Oh, that put me five thousand over.
About as much.
That's put me five thousand over on that.
I'm sorry.
And then move back my Food Bank to ten. The Food Bank.
Okay. We still need-
He did both.
It's fine, it still has a consensus on both, but-
Still has a consensus.
But we're over on, on Councilman Haney. And then still under on, on Vasquez and-
If, if somebody that has the fifteen wants to go down to ten on each-
I'll drop it, I'll go and do that. Go ahead and make those adjustments, Seth.
Or ten?
Yeah. Let's get it there.
Well, okay.
See, it drops us out of consensus.
Yeah, it dropped it out of consensus.
Just keep your- Just keep the fifteen on both.
Okay.
So-
So at fifteen does that, what, seventy-five hundred on there?
We need to drop Haney down to, uh, to ten and ten.
We need to do ten on ten on Meals on Wheels and West Texas Food Bank.
Yeah, to ten and ten.
Councilman Haney would have dropped down to ten and ten?
We still aren't gonna have a consensus.
Nine seventy-one, nine seventy-one.
No.
Nine seventy-one.
Yeah, there's gotta be two people go to ten on Meals on Wheels and West Texas Food Bank, and you'll be, you'll be where you need to be. Cause there's-
So I'll go up to ten and ten, and then you can drop.
That'll put you over.
But I'm gonna drop, but I can go down and drop.
You don't, you don't need to, to do anything, just, I mean, as you look overall, what everybody's agreed to. Just because somebody's over and somebody's under, just as long as we get consensus on the far, on the left-hand column. Are we still?
We have two people at five on five on-
We need one more to be at fifteen.
Yeah.
Move my, move my Meals on Wheels to fifteen.
Okay, there we go.
There we go.
We got it.
It always, it's always the pennies.
Oh, no, we don't have it. It's over. It's over. We don't. Okay.
But keep my Food Bank the same, that way it would work. Yeah.
Fifteen and ten?
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, fifteen, and then West Texas Food Bank at ten, and then someone's gonna have to go up to fifteen, because I don't, I don't have any more to move, to mess with.
That gives one, two, one, two, three, four, right, nine seventy-one?
I can, yes.
Let's see. We still don't have a consensus, no. Somebody else, uh, Ms. Warner, do you want to go up to ten on Food Bank? I think that-
I did, but then, then don't I need to reduce it then somewhere else? Okay, that's fine.
No, but I'm under, so it's okay.
Yeah.
Still, we need one more person at ten.
I'll go at ten.
Okay.
I don't want to, but I'll do it just to-
There, no, still over five. Okay.
Cornell's got one here, right? Now he's exactly there.
Yeah, the consensus is at ten. We got five thousand?
Why don't, why don't y'all just take five thousand dollars off of rehab? Everybody, if you want to do that.
Take five thousand off of rehab, right, everybody, just go across.
That's a roof, okay? We'll, we'll manage a roof without a roof for somebody, okay?
Good idea.
We were trying to help you out.
I know, I know, but the math is getting too difficult, you know, if everybody just agreed to take five thousand off of rehab, we'll be-
So we're looking at four forty-five across the board?
Yes.
Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm thinking that will do it for us. Okay. I, I usually need a calculator. I usually have a calculator.
You got one in a big blue jacket.
There you go.
There, we're, we got it.
There you go. We're good. All right. This is a public hearing. Any other agencies that want to be able to speak on this aisle? Sixteen can do so by coming forward. You have three minutes to address the council. I'll open the public hearing now. Seeing that nobody rests the podium, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do we have any discussions, any other direction on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept the programming of the monies that was allocated in Item sixteen on the program year twenty twenty-three, Community Development Block Grant Fund, CDBG. CDBG Program Income Funds and Unprogrammed Funds.
I saw move.
Great job. I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed, you announce. We're gonna move on to Item seventeen, Consider Authorizing Release of Twenty-Five-Foot Wide Drainage Easement in Section Nine, Block Forty-One, Township Two. TNP Ray Company Survey Midland County. Yes, how you doing, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to consider authorizing the release of twenty-five-foot wide drainage easement. And Forest Hermanus LLC is the owner of the land and is requesting to relocate the existing drainage easement to coincide with the plan development. This item will release the portion that is no longer needed. Said property will be replanted in order to define drainage easement, and an alternate channel will be constructed by the developer. The Public Works Staff reviewed the proposed drainage easement release and recommended approval of the attached resolution. I'll be happy to answer to your questions.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
Well, just the wording, Midland County, is this something that's in Midland County, amongst us?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
It's just across the line there.
Two counties.
That's right.
Both in Nectar and Midland County. That's the Forrest Brothers Development there.
Okay, thank you.
The land they bought from us.
Yep.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion for approval to now. So move. I have a motion for approval for Item seventeen by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cornell. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed, you announce. We're gonna move on to Item nineteen, Consider Granted Easement on and across city-owned property being a sixty, sixty-foot-wide road easement across forty-eight point six four acres. Remainder of the hundred and seventy point seventy tract out in Section Forty-five, Block Forty-two, TNP Railroad, Kenny, survey as referenced in Cabinet C. Yes. Uh, so, Mr. Jones?
Mayor, Council, Intermountain Holdings has requested this easement. It is actually a sixty-wide foot easement of city property to get to their pro, to get to their landlocked property. They had, their attorney had initially requested a hundred years. I thought that was a bit much, but joking around, I put ninety-nine. But ultimately, y'all are gonna get to choose what you want me to put. So, I mean, if you want to do twenty-five years, twenty, whatever you're comfortable with.
Counsel, discussion.
I just need it in the form of a motion.
And this is for access to their property?
Yes. And they run cows on it, I understand.
Typically.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any thoughts?
I feel safer on a shorter term, can be reevaluated, twenty-five.
I'm just looking for a motion of twenty-five, motion at twenty, whatever y'all want to do.
Whatever you want to do.
Twenty some, twenty.
Are there other?
It would be, yes, a motion for twenty years on it.
Yes, we, uh, so we have a motion for twenty years of discussion?
I just want to know if we have other situations like this that we could compare to insofar as the years of agreement?
We, we do. We usually go twenty-five years, twenty years, it just depends. Or fifteen years, I mean, they're all very unique, and so it just matters as to what previous councils have done. But usually, twenty years is a good, good number.
Okay.
With the option to renew.
Thank you.
So I'll, if I can, I'll amend his motion for twenty years with an option to renew?
Definitely, definitely with our new, option to, yes.
Well, I mean, you can make the motion, there's no second, so the, Mr. Cornell's motion isn't locked in. So we have a motion for twenty years for renewal?
With an option to renew?
With an option to renew. Okay, so the discussion on the motion for twenty years with renewal, discussion? Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second by Councilmember Mata. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay? Motion passed, you announce. We're gonna move up to Item twenty, Consider Termination of Pipeline License Agreement with ETC Texas Pipeline. Limited Original License Agreement with Odessa Gas Pipeline Company. Mr. Jones?
Mayor, this is actually a termination of a pipeline, come, with the pipeline, ETC Texas. And it was actually executed in nineteen seventy-one. So we are needing to simply terminate the, their, the pipeline license agreement, so I just need a simple motion.
Counsel, discussion? Consider a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Swann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney. All in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed indicating by saying nay? Motion passing, and we're gonna move on to Item twenty-one. Appointments and Boards, City Secretary?
No, sir.
Keep going to twenty-two, please. Okay. Item on the agenda I'm gonna avoid, and I think I have Rudy's here for that one. I've gone to the dentist. Okay. Item eighteen, Consider Outside Agency Request for Funding for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Three, Twenty-Four Budget. Consider General Fund and Hotel Motel Fund allocations.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Various outside agencies have requested funding from the City of Odessa Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Four Budget. A copy of each application, whether being from the General Fund or the Hotel Motel Fund, have been provided to you for your review prior to this City Council meeting. As you're very well aware, there's a lot of outside agency applicants behind me, so. They're gonna speak on each of their respective requests. The applicant should be able to ask or answer any questions that the City Council may have regarding their requests. The General Fund applicants have requested funds from the General Fund in past years unless otherwise noted. The Hotel Motel applicants have been made aware that it is the City Council's wish and effort that each applicant review how their respective expenditures fit into one of the six categories required for the Hotel Motel Tax Law. Based on eligibility requirements that must be met, the city used a two-part test that would determine whether or not a proposed expenditure is eligible for Hotel Motel tax funding. For the first test, every expenditure must directly enhance and promote tourism and the convention and hotel industry. And the second test is that every end expenditure must clearly fit into one of the six statutory provided categories for the expenditure of hotel occupancy funds. These categories include: funding the establishment, improvement, or maintenance of a convention center or visitor information center; paying the administrative cost for facilitating convention registration; paying for the advertising, solicitations, and promotions that attract tourists and convention delegates to the city or its vicinity; expenditures that promote the arts; funding historical restoration or preservation programs; and fund costs to hold sporting events that substantially increase hotel activity. With that in mind, I introduce you to the various outside agency applicants requesting funds for the Fiscal Year Twenty-Four Budget.
So all the outside agencies are coming and making a request. We will be calling them as they're presented. I know I have some individuals here that have requested to speak on it. So we'll go through the agencies first. And come, also, we'll remind that since we have a large number of people here, we will be, you will be, you'll be limited to three minutes. And the City Secretary will, will notify you when these three minutes are up. Children's Miracle Network, Samantha Serrano. Just introduce yourself and your organization, just for the record, and your three minutes will commence.
Hello, my name is Alison Praden. I'm the Vice President of Development. I'm actually here on behalf of Sam Serrano. She's out of town at the beach, so I got to be with y'all today.
Lucky her. Don't we all want to be there with her?
I know. Every hour, Children's Miracle Network at Medical Center Health System sees three different pediatric patients. Every week, we use more than nine hundred diapers, and we have more than a hundred kids come through our emergency room. And each year, we see more than twenty-three thousand patients that are of pediatric age come through our doors. Thanks to the support of donors like the City of Odessa, we're able to provide Medical Center Hospital with the critical funds needed to advance pediatric health care. These funds go to the most urgent needs, whether providing charitable care to the families, training the next generation of doctors and nurses, or simply just offering assistance to those families in their various times of need. The majority of the funds requested tonight will go towards the purchase of bedside scales and new bassinets due to the growing census at Medical Center Hospital. The remainder of the funds will be designated for child life services and charitable support for the patients and their families. What I am really asking from you tonight is insurance for future pediatric patients and their families. Out of the twenty-three thousand children that receive care by Medical Center Hospital each year, no parent imagines their child could be one of those twenty-three thousand. I can tell you I am one of those parents that has experienced that. They may not need the help from Children's Miracle Network today, but could need it tomorrow. By investing in our future today, we can have a healthier tomorrow. True progression could not be- True progression could not be possible without the generosity of our donors. As we celebrate the health of thousands of children helped over the past thirty-eight years, it's important to note that we are not finished. We have set our sights even higher because we know that when we can improve medical treatment, equipment, and facilities, we can address the most challenging health issues today while preventing and preparing for those to come. When we make it easier for people to understand and give to improve children's health, our collective impact grows exponentially. And when we change the health of even one child or family, we create a ripple effect that propels the community for years to come. Thank you for your previous support and for your consideration of our request tonight. Thank you for all you have done in driving our mission to change the future of pediatric health care for our community. And with care and generosity, we know that together we can change kids' lives and change the future. You have any questions?
Council, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Or does it Crime Stoppers?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Susan Rogers. I'm with Odessa Crime Stoppers. Odessa Crime Stoppers is celebrating their fortieth year of service to our community this year. Real excited about that. In that forty years, we've been, had a pretty successful program. There's been thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-three community members that have used our tips line or our app, our website, to call in tips to us. This has led to solving nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight cases in forty years. That has led to over, almost, we're right under twelve million dollars in seized narcotics and recovered stolen property. So we've had a very good forty years. We look forward to another forty years. A lot of things have changed since we started back forty years ago. I've got thirty-six years of the forty years with the program. We used to spend two and three hours with news media to produce a thirty-second spot to do a crime of the week that I'm sure you guys are familiar with, that we used to do, to now when we actually have a podcast that we produce on our own. And even though we, and our podcast has become international. We're worldwide on our podcast now. And even though we featured cases on our podcast that we featured in the past on our Crime of the Weeks and things like that, we have actually gotten tips that investigators have not ever had before, and we're real hopeful on a couple of the cases. One of them looks really good. I don't know if y'all remember B.L. King's case. It's about thirty years old. And we've gotten information on that that law enforcement has never seen before. So we're real hopeful on that one. We also participate every year in the mayor's project or operation graduation for underage drinking and social hosting. This year, we had a really good year. It was a little bit quiet. I think all the publicity that the mayor puts out for us and that we put out and the news media all helps us with really helped that, keep that number down this year. I do know that one of the parties, though, resulted in a firearm being seized and the person that belonged to it going to jail. So that, again, is a very successful program that we do each year. Another thing that we do with students, I know y'all know that we have a student Crime Stopper program. It's also very successful within our school district. For the first time in Texas Crime Stoppers history, they have appointed a student to the Texas Crime Stoppers Council who's appointed by the governor, and that is one of our students this year. So we're very proud of that. We've done a lot in forty years. We look forward to a lot more. We appreciate all the support you've given us over the years. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Council, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to Permian Care.
All right, good evening. Thank you, Mayor Hoven, City Council members, for giving me a couple of minutes to talk about our organization, our program. We were created in nineteen sixty-nine, about fifty-four years ago this month, in Midland, so I apologize. But in nineteen seventy-two, the City of Odessa and Ector County joined that entity, and they created what is now Permian Care, what used to be known as Permian Basin Community Centers for MHMR. The original purpose was to bring individuals with severe and persistent mental illness out of institutions and individuals that had intellectual and developmental disabilities, which you may have known as mental retardation at that time, out of institutions and into the community, and set up programs to help them thrive and live their fullest lives. And we still serve that purpose today. We have some added responsibilities for crisis response and some HIV clinics and early childhood intervention programs, things of that sort. But in our application to you, we asked for ninety thousand dollars that is matched funding that helps support our state and federal sources. We asked for the same amount for the City of Midland for other programs. What we describe in there is an IDD day program, which is for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities who have Down Syndrome or cerebral palsy. They come into that day program on thirty-one sixteen Kermit Highway, and they learn social skills and work with their peers and just, really just the happiest place on earth if you ever have a few minutes to go visit it. In addition to that, the higher functioning ones will work on janitorial crews at night. They'll clean our facilities. They clean the facilities at Tech Dot through state set-aside programs, and they'll earn a wage during that process. So they're there to develop vocational skills. And some of them will graduate from our programs and go to work at Burger King or McDonald's or the hospital and do various tasks. But that is really the program that we presented to you, the vehicle to fund the ninety thousand. It's about seven hundred thousand in total. Y'all fund about fifteen percent of it. The rest of it comes from various state and federal sources that we earn through that ninety thousand dollars to start. But any questions on that?
Council, any questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Or does it Teen Court?
Good evening, Council. I'm Rebecca Grisham with Odessa Teen Court. And we also, like Ms. Rogers, and Crime Stoppers are turning forty this year. Odessa Teen Court was created by Junior League in nineteen eighty-three, so we have been here for four decades. We have an interlocal agreement with the city, the county, and the school district. We're here asking for the seventy-two thousand this year, which is a four percent increase over last year in line with the just cost of living increases. I have a few numbers for you guys this year to tell y'all a little bit about the last four decades and just this last year. Our scholarship fund that is funded by adult juror donations, we've had that for thirty years. That first year, we gave five total scholarships to teenagers. It was twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Over the last thirty years, we have given ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars in scholarships. Our Keepo Odessa Beautiful Trash Pickups that we started in August of twenty twenty, that first trash pickup with that first lot, we had twenty volunteers. We picked up twenty-five bags of trash. We have done that monthly. This last trash pickup, June third in twenty twenty-three, we had sixty volunteers that month. We picked up sixty bags of trash. So since that August date in twenty twenty, we have now picked up fifteen hundred and ninety-five bags of trash. We have a key program, and I've got some of the ladies on the back row with me. We have a hospital class over at Medical Center Hospital, and that collaboration includes so many people that help us put this class on for our teenagers. We've had a hundred and eighty-some kids and their parents come through this class. We're teaching our teenagers and their parents driving things, distracted driving, drinking and driving, texting and driving, a lot of things about drugs, a lot of fentanyl, THC, things like that. We have Serena Watts with Medical Center Trauma Department. We've got Janie Villanueva and Bryn Dodd. They both lost their sons in alcohol-related accidents in Odessa. They bravely speak to our teenagers and their parents about losing their sons. And we've got Gina Rodriguez, Sergeant Blanco, Peyton Adams with Odessa Fire and Rescue. All these people taught to our teenagers, and they helped put this class on, and we do a tour through the hospital. And that's a hundred and eighty kids and their parents. We've had eleven classes so far. And we've taken that class, a small version of it, to the two high schools and one middle school. We now have a dedicated fentanyl class that we've done. The first one was this last, or two Mondays ago. It is over at Fire Station Number Six. It's Serena and Don Hallmark who lost his son also to an overdose. And we had forty parents and teenagers show up to that class just to hear about fentanyl and these THC vapes. And we've got a financial class over at Southwest Bank. We had a hundred and forty kids go through that those last couple of years. And our kids donated three hundred and fifty jars of peanut butter to the food bank last summer, donated twenty-five hundred dollars in gift cards. And real quick, I just wanted to introduce y'all to Stacy Watt. I talked too long. She has volunteered with us for forty whole years. So since our doors opened, I just wanted y'all to see what forty years of this is dedication. So not being paid, forty years of showing up on Mondays, looks like. So do y'all have any questions?
Council, any questions? Thank you very much.
Three minutes goes too fast.
We'll move on to Young Professionals of Odessa.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Kaylee Bundah. I am the Chairwoman for the Young Professionals of Odessa. It is my honor to be standing here as the representative for our organization. However, I would be remiss if I didn't also ask all of my board members and current YPO members in the audience to please stand. Thank you, and remain standing until our time here is done. This request comes from all of us. They didn't know I was going to put them on the spot. This request comes from all of us and those who we represent. We would first like to thank our city council for their historical generous support, which has helped our organization and thereby our community flourish for so many years now. The funds granted have consistently been used to increase our service capacity, enhance our community impact, and help promote community investment within the young professional demographic. Young Professionals of Odessa has reached a monumental point in our life cycle. Over the past year, our membership has increased by twenty-six percent, reaching an all-time high. We have volunteered over a hundred thousand dollars' worth of volunteer hours. We have donated seven thousand dollars to schools with high economically disadvantaged populations, and we have just celebrated and honored twenty-five young professionals who encompass the essence of what YPO Odessa is all about at our OU Forty Gala. We will finish our fiscal year by hosting our inaugural Full Day Permian Basin Leadership Symposium to be held at the Odessa Marriott on August twenty-fifth. We expect to have two hundred professionals in attendance. Our focus in the upcoming year will be to exponentially multiply our impact and reach young professionals across the Permian. You have in front of you our plan of action. All uses and initiatives incorporate the same themes that your initiatives do, focusing on the growth and development of Odessa's leaders in our community. I do hope you also had the opportunity to read the statements of support we included from some of our local community partners, Ector County Judge Fossett, the Honorable James Rush, and Renee Earl, CEO of the Chamber. As mentioned, this request comes from all of us. It comes from the many young professionals in this city who made a commitment to make positive contributions to their community. I thank you in advance for the consideration, and I thank you for your support of an organization working very hard to help our community be the best version of itself. I'll take any questions you have.
Council, any questions?
I have, I have one.
Go ahead.
So in the binder that y'all submitted to us, do you realize that there's a contract for twenty thousand? Y'all are asking for forty-eight hundred?
So we sent the documents from our last year. The documents that we set in place at the beginning of our fiscal year represented the contract that expires at September thirty, which is the end of our fiscal year.
Okay.
Yes. You're welcome.
Council, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to item six, Odessa. Odessa Downtown Lions Club, West Texas Folk Festival.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Hoven, Norma, City Council members. Thank you for letting me come up here and tell you about a couple of events that we applied for. I'm a past governor of the Lions Club. My name's Javier Morales. I will brag about Lions. We are over a hundred years old internationally and eighty-seven years old in Odessa. So just push my weight on the other clubs. And I would not make my members stand up, but you can see all the yellow vests back there. So I got a lot of power, too. So anyway, the first event is a parade, Fourth of July Parade. As you know, the Odessa J.C.'s did a great job over.
Are you presenting both of them?
Yeah. And thank you, Seth, for helping. He was really great throughout the whole process, first time I'm doing this. The first one is the Fourth of July Parade. Odessa J.C.'s did a great job over forty years. And in two thousand and nineteen, they stopped. And I spoke to them, and they said, well, we're just getting too old. And that stopped, the Fourth of July Parade stopped. And so I'm not asking you today to vote for a parade. I'm asking you to vote for families getting together, for memories. I remember in the nineteen seventies being in a float as a Boy Scout, and I have a Polaroid to prove that. And so the.
That you can still see?
Yes, yes.
Some of these young people don't know what you're talking about.
Yes, yes. I'm talking to the gray hair up here. So the. Anyway, I want you to vote for that because you, with your pen, you're voting for the future of our community. If we stop doing the Fourth of July Parade, stop remembering the ten-year wars we've had with the American Revolutionary War, the World War II with Japan, all those people that tried to come and take our country away from us, where, what direction are we heading? You're not voting for a parade. We're voting for that, for the veterans that we have in our communities, not forgotten what they went through, you know? I was trying to get a flag honor guard for a parade, and I wanted the Vietnam vets, and they can't do that anymore. They can't walk ten blocks. So it's on us to carry that in our community. It's not a parade you're voting for. It's for our community, our patriotism. What direction you as a council want this community to go into the future? Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Do I still have time, Norma? A little bit. On the backend, the money you give will be guarded by the Odessa Downtown Lions Club. We have a board of directors. We also have a CPA and audits. We have that. It was, I didn't know how to fill that out on the application, but you will, your money will be safe with that club.
You want to go ahead and do the West Texas Folk Festival?
Yes. The second event, we can, as you're aware and everybody in the audience, you probably have a friend that's no longer Mexican, white, or black. They're from other countries. They're coming here as petroleum engineers, as sand truck drivers, as physicians, and we're not doing nothing with them. They're part of the community. Their kids are in our schools. So what I wanted to do is do a folk festival where we showcase all these other cultures and have them all at one event. And tonight, I want to thank Lucy. She came out from Midland. So we already have people from Midland coming to support this. I have a lot of other folks in the audience that are from, you know, other cultures that are really excited about this. So it's not just going to be Odessa Downtown Lions Club doing this event. It's going to be all the cultures backing this up. And so I wanted to do that also on a date when we're not interfering with other events, also when it's not hot. So think of that when you're voting on this. So we want to do it, you know, in a time when it's a nice time, and we just try this and see how that goes. That, I think, will be greatly supported by all the Permian Basin because we have people in Pecos, you know, and all these cultures are all, this is the future of Odessa. And so I wanted you to, you know, keep that in mind when you vote if you would like something like that, that the city government supports and wants the vision of this, of what our community is now. It's not what it used to be in nineteen sixty-five. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
I kind of want to say the pledge of allegiance again.
And also remember, the Odessa Downtown would be the guardian of that money with their, you know, with their structure. So it's not an individual. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, can we do this allocation and then let them leave and then do that?
Yeah.
And then do the big one?
Yeah. Oh, the general fund?
Yeah. Mayor, we need to do the general fund first.
Okay. So, what we're going to wind up doing, I think it's a great idea, that way you can go ahead and move on, yeah, stay for the rest. We're going to go ahead and do the allocation for the general fund. We're going to wind up starting with, to my right, council member Swanick.
Mayor, on the YPO, I do have a contract here that Michael Marrero signed that says that it's the city agrees to pay the contract an amount from the general fund not to exceed the term of this agreement, which is, which is the $20,000. Any additional amount must be obtained from other funding sources.
Okay. I'm not going to get into it right now. Okay.
Okay. So, I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to.
Counsel, you wanted to discuss this contract?
No.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on. Okay, good. Councilmember Swanick?
Children's Miracle Network, $50,000. Odessa Crime Stoppers, $65,000. PermaCare, $90,000. Odessa Teen Court, I will abstain. Young Professionals, $10,000. Odessa Lions Club, $10,000. Odessa Downtown Lions Club, $5,000.
Children's Miracle Network, $50,000. Crime Stoppers, $55,000. Permian Care, $90,000. Being I'm a member of the Teen Court Board, I'm going to abstain from that one. YPO, $10,000. West Texas Folk Festival, $15,000. And the Fourth of July Parade, $5,000.
Children's Miracle Network, $50,000. Crime Stoppers, $65,000. PermaCare, $90,000. Teen Court, $72,260. Young Professionals, $10,000. And Lions Club Folk Festival, $10,000. And Fourth of July Parade, $5,000.
Children's Miracle Network, $50,000. Crime Stoppers, $65,000. PermaCare, $90,000. Teen Court, $35,000. Young Professionals, $10,000. West Texas Folk Festival, $15,000.
Children's Miracle Network, $50,000. Odessa Crime Stoppers, $65,000. Permian Care, $90,000. Odessa Teen Court, $72,260. Young Professionals of Odessa, $20,000. West Texas Folk Festival, $15,000. And Fourth of July Parade, $5,000.
Children's Miracle Network, $50,000. Odessa Crime Stoppers, $65,000. Permian Care, $90,000. Odessa Teen Court, $40,000. Young Professionals of Odessa, $10,000. West Texas Folk Festival, $10,000. And Fourth of July Parade, $5,000.
I want to do $50,000 for the Children's Miracle Network, $65,000 for Odessa Crime Stoppers, PermaCare, $90,000. Odessa Teen Court at $40,000. Young Professionals of Odessa at $20,000. Odessa Downtown Lions Club, $10K on the first, and then $10K on the second.
Teen Court, we do not have a consensus.
Have a discussion on Teen Court? It would have to, two people would have to move minimum. Is there a middle ground?
Well, I really believe in just whatever it's worth. I really believe in the Teen Court. I think it does a lot of good, and it supports, you know, our graduation goals and objectives and.
Is there a middle ground for $50,000?
I'd do $50,000.
I'll move at $50,000.
Mr. Mayor, $50,000?
$50,000.
Mr. Haney with $50,000.
I'll do $50,000.
Anyone else?
I'll do $50,000.
We need a motion.
Do you need my help on any more, or is this?
We got a consensus.
Okay.
So, total is, okay. So, counsel, do I have a motion to accept the totals as presented for the general fund allocation for outside agencies?
So, motion?
I have a motion by council member Connell to have a second.
Second.
Second by council member Mathol, in favor, and you kidding, but saying not?
Aye.
Opposing, kidding, but saying nay? Motion passed unanimously. All right. All the applicants, thank you for applying, and that will conclude the general fund portion. That way, we're not keeping you all, no. We'll let them go ahead and leave, and then we'll proceed on the hotel motel tax, the way those old guys can hear. I include myself in that. I'm not, I can't hear. Do we need a restroom break? We're going to take a quick recess for five minutes, stretch your legs, and we'll be back in about five minutes. Thank you.
Oh, my God. That was.
Yeah. Don't even say a word about it, because you're jinxing it.